Welcome everyone to the City of Daily City's regular meeting of the Recreation Commission for April 23rd, Tuesday. And just a couple bullet points here for those wishing to address the Recreation Commission on any item on the agenda or under public appearance oral communications, please complete a speaker card located at the entrance to the City Council Chambers and submit to staff members as early in the meeting as possible. Also, persons with disabilities who require auxiliary aids or services in attending or participating in the meeting should call the Department of Library and Recreation Services as soon as possible prior to the meeting. At this time, I'd like to have everyone rise to the pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. We had the roll call, please Denise.
Commissioner Ortiz?
Here.
Commissioner Flamenco?
Here.
Commissioner Pastor?
Here. Okay. We have a... Do I have an approval of this evening's agenda? You have a motion for that?
Aye.
Second?
Yep, second.
Okay. Those in favor of this evening's agenda do say aye?
Aye.
Aye. And the approval of our minutes from our last meeting, do I have a motion to approve those?
Motion to approve?
And do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Those in favor approving the last minutes do say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. And Director's Reports. Thank you.
Thank you. So tonight, we have a presentation by David Zetzer on the Summer Youth Recreation Program. And David is one of our Recreation Program Supervisors, oversees many different areas, but specifically the amazing Summer Youth Recreation Program. Take it over, David.
Again, my name is David. I'm the supervisor over the Youth Recreation Program, specifically the Summer Youth Recreation Program and the Spring Break and JSD Ski Week Camps. I will be reviewing the Summer 2018 over the programs, field trips, and some of the other activities that we had done, and then fill you in on our recent Spring Break Camp and JSD Ski Week Camp. So if you don't know, the Summer Youth Recreation Program is our subsidized program for youth ages five and a half to 14. We have two different programs at four different locations. The first program is what we're now calling the Adventure Camp. It is for five and a half to 14-year-olds at Marchbank and Hillside, and then five and a half to 10-year-olds at Geller and Westlake. And now we have the new Explorer Camp, which is for those older kids, 10 to 14, only available at Geller and Westlake. Geller and Westlake are two of our super sites and have almost a capacity of 140 at each location. And there, we found that we break up the kids into their prospective age groups, and we have age-specific programming and field trips, and it makes for a more enjoyable summer for everyone. The Summer Youth Recreation Program consists of 10 theme weeks. They're very generalized theme weeks, allowing the staff to come up with their own creative activities, gameplay, and we try to relate all of our field trips and cooking projects to that theme. So our 10 theme weeks, which are Ahoy Summer, Smore Summer, Summer Blast Off, Summer of the Stars, Dive in a Summer, A Wild Summer, Hot Summer Nights with a K, A Summer Carnival, A Super Summer, and Magic of Summer. And as part of the Summer Youth Recreation Program, we offer weekly field trips that are available as an add-on item. The field trips range every week. We do also have weekly swimming field trips to the Giamano Swimming Pool, and then one large field trip and one smaller field trip to a more local destination. Last summer, this is a list of some of our field trips that we had participated on. I will have a couple videos at the end of a couple of them, so you can see kind of live action of what we did do. The new one for last summer that we included was the Ropes Course, the archery lessons, and the Pier 39 Mirror Maze, and the Ripley's Believe It or Not. And it was a new add that was pretty good. We also have six special events that are attached to the Summer Youth Recreation Program. Those special events are an additional fee, but it is optional, it's not included. Those are the Movie Night in the Park. We kicked off the summer showing, I want to say, Harry Potter. And then we moved into our Pool Party at Giamano Pool, our Challenge of the Parks Field Day, which is kind of like potato sack races, and egg on a spoon, and wacky cardboard car relays. We have our annual talent show, Daily City's Got Talent. And we originally had started to try to do a family camp out, and then had to turn it into an overnight sleepover or gym lock-in for all the kids. You'll get to see a highlight video of it at the end of the presentation. And then we close off the summer with our annual End of Summer Carnival, where all four locations get together, and we have all the kids at Westlake Park. It's the biggest game of dodgeball Daily City has ever seen, followed by a carnival, cotton candy, and all the goodies that go with it. The Volunteen Leadership Program is an integral part of the Summer Youth Recreation Program. Egardo will be speaking about that in his portion today, and you'll get to know a little bit more. But what it pretty much is, is high school-aged volunteers that get some skills, and they help out in our program. This summer, we have a new schedule of trips. We've adjusted our weeks. We've rearranged some things to keep it fresh. So you can see our full guide online for our camp brochure to check out the new field trips that we have. We are also kicking off our summer with a Meet the Staff Meet and Greet on Friday, June 7th at 6:30. We're going to be showing the Mary Poppins Returns. It's free for anybody who wants to come watch the film. But you can also go there, meet and greet the staff that will be working at your location, get the emergency forms, and also fill out any paperwork and get the rules and regulations that we're moving forward. This year, instead of trying to do the overnight and a family dinner, we're going to split it and have just a family feast and a movie. There is a fee involved with this one. The first one I mentioned is totally free. It's open to the public, even if you're not participating in the Summer Youth Recreation Program. We've also invited some of our other camps to come and attend. So if you want to ask questions of, an example, Aquatics Camp or Basketball Camp, we've invited them to table. Hopefully, we'll find out and be able to let you know if they'll be there later. Go back. Sorry about... I think I need to go back. But it's okay. The total number of registered participants that we had this year are 2,400 and some change. Those are individual registrants throughout the 10 weeks. The camp does begin in... As soon as the South San Francisco Unified School District ends, and then we start right away with one location open at Geller Park. And then we close Geller at Week 9, and just keep three remaining locations open to finish serving the rest of the school kids that haven't gone back to school yet. The other section that I do run is the Spring Break Adventure Camp. Yeah, I do need to go back. But I can do this first. The Spring Break Adventure Camp is a camp that coincided with the Jefferson School District's Spring Break this year. We had 57 registrants. The camp goes from 8:00 AM to 6:00 PM. We have a program each day. Yeah. The whole thing died. No, forward, please.
Forward?
Forward. Not the only one. Sorry about this.
It's okay.
I did give you copies of the presentations as well. So on the second pink page, the Spring Break, it gives you a list of the highlighted activities. We went to the movies. We had a... We had a baking project, a Wheels Day ceremony. We went to the ceremony farmer's market, bought fresh fruits, vegetables, and all the other goodies to bring back to the location, because on the last day, we finished with a feast, and all the kids actually got to dip all the fruit that they purchased in chocolate and make their own chocolate-covered fruit as a dessert.
Nice.
For the Spring Break Camp. I'm going to go back three pages to the JSD President Week Adventure Camp. This year, we added a new module to the Youth Recreation Program, knowing that a lot of parents in the Jefferson School District didn't have a program for their kids during that week. We took a different approach. Instead of offering a full week of programming, we offered four days, because we were only open four days that week with the holiday, and gave each day a specific field trip, and we made it a field trip-based or activity-based day. So parents got to pick and choose the individual day that they... The individual day that they had participated in. So Tuesdays, we went to the movies. Wednesday, we took them to the San Francisco Zoo. On Thursday, we went bowling at Seabowl. Friday, we had a onsite scavenger hunt and a cooking project. The weather wasn't really with us that day, so instead of barbecuing like our original plan, we went in and all the kids got to make their own individual pizzas, and it was pretty good for them. Who doesn't like pizza on a cold day? Here's the slide I was trying to show earlier. The Wheels Day, we do have the kids bring their own bicycles and safety gear, and then we try to quarter off certain areas in the park for them to ride their skateboard, scooters, rollerblades, bicycles. This video that I'm showing is a recap that was on our social media about our field trip to Pacific Archery. This was the Explorer Camp, the kids that are 10 to 14. Very special shout-out to Christopher Joe, who does all these videos, one of our part-time hourly employees. He does almost all the videos that you see on our social media platforms and posts them, and he does a lot of our photos as well.
What's his name?
Christopher Joe.
Okay.
This is our Adventure Camp. They went to the aquarium by the bay, as well as a San Francisco Bay cruise on the And this final video that I'm going to show you, this recap, is from our overnight sleepover. And I didn't share this a little earlier with the slideshow problem, but for the Ski Week Adventure Camp, we had a total... An average of around 30 participants each day and a totaling around 140. The Spring Break Camp itself had a registered 57 participants. And that's about all I have to report on about the Youth Recreation Programs. If there's any questions, let me answer them as best I can.
Well, first, I want to tell you that these two kids right here are mine.
Really?
Yeah. They were the last summer in Geller, and so they loved it, and hopefully this summer too.
David, thank you and your staff for putting together a fantastic program. I know that it reminded me of how beautiful the community is in terms of seeing all the smiling faces out there, especially the youth. And the legal trips out in the bay reminds me, I got to do that again soon. But thank you again for all the hard work, and there's nice little presentation slides here for us to follow with you on. Thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question. So I was living before in San Bruno, and they have a summer program too, but their program starts from 2 to 5. 2 to 5 is the first group that they go just half-day. Do you... Do you know why our summer programs start from 5?
We... The Summer Youth Recreation Program historically started for an 11:04 PM program, and it was free. And when the budget started to change and things in the city started to change, we had to meet the demand and the population, as well as start charging. When we did that, we originally offered a half-day program and a full-day program, trying to cater to all participants. But we had more of like a 85% registration rate in the full-day program and a very small half-day population at only some locations. And it was really hard to do half-day kids, full-day kids, and get programming done for the full day, and let kids go on field trips, or you got to drop them off at 9:00, oh, but you don't come until 11:00. And so we just transitioned out of it and started offering this module for maybe four years now. And so that's why we don't have a half-day. Also, it's just not feasible right now with the fee structures that we have, to have multiple codes, multiple fees, in that way.
And also, the age from 2 to 5 is more care, right?
Oh, 2 to 5-year-olds. I'm sorry. I thought you were meaning PM, like half-day. There are a couple other programs that the city offers that do cater to that age group, the Tiny Top Program at the Dolger Art Center and the Tiny Top Program at Geller Park. Those are contracted instructors, contracted instructors, and they offer programming. It's not necessarily daycare, or... But we do have something like that during the summer, and it's like Tuesday, Thursday, or Monday, Wednesday. And then the Pacelli Event Center down there at Westlake Gym has a drop-in kinder gym, Monday, Wednesday, Friday, that participants can go and pay a daily drop-in fee and participate for that age range. So there are things available, it's just not a true camp program or like a daycare-style program.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sorry I misunderstood that.
Great. Anything else from the group?
Thank you, David.
Dave, appreciate it.
So the next presentation we have is Egardo Bolanos, and he, again, like David, oversees many different areas. The Volunteen Leadership Program, he took over last year, I believe, two years ago. And he enjoys it so much that he's moving forward with it again this year, and Christopher Joe is one of his staff. He supports... Christopher Joe supports both entities, but Chris's passion is through the Volunteens as well. So I'm turning it over to Egardo.
All right. Thank you for having me today. Again, my name is Egardo Bolanos. I am in charge of Daily City Teens, along with my staff, Matthew Joe, Chris Joe, Rod Banda, Jorge Gama, and Alex Kanzanay, along with other support from full-time staff, of course. But those are the part-time staff that really drive this program. Okay. So volunteer... Volunteen Leadership Program, VLP, is a... Next slide. Oh. That just died. Oh. So what is VLP? So the Volunteer Leadership Program gives teens who have graduated 8th grade, so the high schools from 14 to 18, opportunity to perform community service at one of the four Summer Youth Recreation Programs, so the ones that David just went over. But it's better just to see what it is. So if you don't already follow us on Facebook, you can see all these videos and pictures. So this is a preview of what to expect for this year. during the summer, because these teens are the support structure that make the Summer Youth Program happen. Obviously, we have our staff, but these teens dedicate their days on their own time to make sure that those kids get to enjoy their summers by supporting the staff that are there at each site. So we do, as David said, we have SYRP at four sites, so we have VLPs at all four sites. So Westlake, Geller, Marchbank, and Hillside. Because Westlake and Geller are such bigger sites, as far as the capacity they can hold as far as the children, we do have a lot more Volunteens at those sites. These smaller sites are pretty much reserved for the younger VLPs and people that live in those neighborhoods. So each VLP, upon registering, we do orientations, and they let us know exactly where they want to be. They go through an interview process, and then they get selected, and they go to one of the four sites. So every VLP that does sign up gets to be at one site, depending on how early they register, and if they attend all the orientations, they have a higher chance of getting the site that they, you know, their first choice. So what do the Volunteens do? So they engage the participants at the SYRP program by assisting staff. They lead the activities and games, supervise arts and crafts, help prepare for the Summer Talent Show, the Summer Carnival, and all the other special events that SYRP have. But it's not just helping out, you know, being volunteers at the programs. They do get leadership training. So we do eight trainings throughout the summer. The first two are the orientations, so they get leadership in, I think, team building or communication, I forget which is the second. But essentially, what we do is we give them the skills that they're going to need now and toward their future, no matter where they go, what they do. It's a good starting point if they haven't gotten training like this. We do those different topics, like leadership, safety, team building, communication, diversity. And not only do we give them training, we give them along the way each week, depending on what the training was. They get something to do with that every week at site. So when they go back to their sites, they're using those skills that they've just learned in the training. And the next week, when they come back for their next training, there's a recap to see what they've learned, how they've implemented what they did, and then they learn something new. This year, we're actually going to have guest speakers come and talk, depending on the topics. One of the big things that's affecting teens right now is mental health, so we're going to let them know what those resources are, because it does have a lot to do with what they do in the community. With those trainings, each training consists of icebreakers, games, and activities related to the topic. As you saw in those videos, they were like blowing the ping-pong balls on the water. That was a teamwork thing. They had to figure out what the best way to get the balls through the cups, and then they had to repeat. So it's... They have to build a rapport with the people on their team and then actually do something. So they have a task they have to complete. So a lot of the activities that you saw in that video, it was them doing the activities, the games. Some of them are just for fun. Some of them have a secret meaning they don't realize until after they're done. And that's probably the best way to learn, right? So you sign up, you register, you get assigned to your site, and you get to do community service. So when you're not training, you're onsite, you're doing community service, you're earning hours for high school, for those that need... It's a requirement for high school, and if not, you're banking hours, so when you apply for college, you have a good community service record. So they do receive a logbook, and they track their own hours. Staff will verify each week to make sure that those are correct. And then a letter is sent to each participant, letting them know how many hours were completed, and then they can turn that into their school, so it can be counted for. We do... So the hours that are allowed to do, it's all up to the participant. So the Voluntee, it's up to them to decide how many hours they want. We do have Volunteens that do summer school and other activities throughout the summer. They go on vacations, that's okay. They let us know, it's kind of like a mini job, like a... Or, you know, they... It teaches them responsibility. They got to let their staff, the staff that's there at each site, know, hey, I'm not going to be here because I'm going on vacation or have summer school, so that staff can then work around that, so they know who to count on and who to assign for different tasks. So it teaches them responsibility of, you know... And then at the same time, committing to those hours that they say that they're going to be there. And again, it's pretty much... We've had Volunteens rack up over 400 hours individually. We had 104 registrants last year for VLPs, and altogether, they completed 15,505 hours of community service. So 15,000 hours over with 100... You know, so that averages 155, I think, hours per participant, but some only did 10, because they could only... They were only available one week. But they got the trainings, they got the orientation, they came for that one week, and they put in their 10 hours, which is, you know, what we want. And they build bonds, like this picture is a perfect example. The guy's just sitting down and talking to his team, you know, like another peer, someone else, it's not staff, but, you know, it brings that... Brings the community closer together, right? All age groups, because now that VLP reports to the staff, is working with the staff, but the volunteer is also working with the kids, so... Part of the... The part of, you know, obviously, they're gaining hours, but we want to make sure that we are, you know, giving them some type of, not a reward, but...
Incentive.
Yeah, an incentive, and to show them that we see that you guys are... You're achieving certain tasks. So the staff created different buttons, so there are little pins that they create. Each pin represents a different thing, whether it's a task, whether it's getting over a fear they might have, whether it's running a game, completing a certain mark of hours in a certain time. So they like to collect them, and they, you know, some of them are able to collect all of them, some only collect a few, but it's something that, you know, to drive them to get more, so. On top of the buttons, obviously, there's other rewards. So this is a picture, we went to Great America. These were essentially the top, I think, all... I think all of them had, I think, over 250 hours. So we paid to take them on a bus and we went to Great America. So I think we took around 40, I don't know if all of them were there, but took 30 to 40. I don't want to count them right now, but, and the staff were there. So we, you know, it was a good time. We let them, and again, showing them that we trust them. They kind of did their own thing. We run into them, we do checks, but they all, we took them all down and we brought them all back, so. And we didn't get any, you know, no one got in trouble, so. But along with that, they get gift certificates, movie passes, trip to the movies, so part of their hours is actually going to the movies and doing their own special field trip. This field trip, we do an appreciation breakfast in the past. This year, we're going to do an appreciation dinner. For those that are the elite that have, you know, gained over three, I think we set the goal to 350, we're actually going to be taking them out to a nice dinner. So, you know, it's kind of rewarding them for their commitment to the city, to the youth, and showing them that they, they matter, right? So, so that's essentially it. If you want to register, if your teen is, has graduated or is graduating 8th grade this year, you can visit dailycity.org/iplay. Either type in VLP or use that code on the screen to register. If you register before June 8th, you'll save $25 on the current fee of $75 for residents, 100 for non-residents. And again, that gets you your t-shirt, your lanyard, your logbook, and access to all the other things that we have planned. And if you don't already do so, follow us on Facebook and Instagram. VLP is part of the Daily City Teens, it's what we do during the summer, but we do have other activities throughout the year. So if you're interested in taking a look to see what we do year-round, follow us and you'll get all the information there.
Thank you, Edgardo.
You're welcome.
Yeah. New question. When we saw the example of the volunteer speaking to the youngster on the park, is that an example of a community service activity?
Yeah, so once they're onsite, depending on what the needs are, they're doing, whether, you know, they're just hanging out, supervising, because I think at that point, they were just supervising the kids that were playing at the playground. And it just happened that they got caught talking. So it could be supervising the children while the staff is setting up a game, it could be them setting up the game, it could be them running the game. In the video, there was one of the VLPs, he's a drummer, so he brought his drum set and he showed all the kids how to drum. We've had other kids that, you know, bring their guitars and play for the kids, so. We try and see what talents they have and we want to make sure that they showcase those, which reminds me, we have a showcase, so we've done, we do three teen showcases every year. The VLP one is essentially in the summer where we invite everybody, VLP or just any teen, to come and, you know, present their talents. So, but it's, it's, it's an opportunity for them to be them.
Is that at the end of the, end of summer?
Yeah, it's towards the end, so it's an obvious.
We'll watch for it next time.
Definitely.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I did enjoy last year where my kids were there, that how for the talent show, all the VLPs were teaching the steps, so you see the little ones trying to follow, and they were really into it. That's something that I did enjoy and how even they became role models for the little ones.
And it's, it's important for the younger ones to see the teens in a good light, because then it makes the teens feel empowered to do that for other people, so that then the rest of the community sees them for what they are.
I like, just want to commend you for creating like a really professional environment for these, like, for these teens, because like, in the end, like, little do they know they're volunteering, but they're really getting like on-the-job experience, especially if you're going to be an after-school educator, if you plan to work for recreation in the future. It's literally everything you're going to be doing, like, so having them go through the application process, having you interview them, I'm really excited to see how this program continues to grow.
And I'm glad you brought that up, because it is a gateway, the VLP program to our staff, the staff that actually work. A lot of our staff come from the VLP program. So it's, you know, they, they go to the programs, they become a VLP, they get that training, and then they apply, and then the ones that are ready, they get hired. And the ones that don't, well, they go back to VLP, they learn more, and then they try again.
Oh, for sure, I could attest to that. I've worked with some of them that's actually went up that pathway too as well, so.
Yeah, I like the way that it begins the program when they finish graduating 8th grade, and it gets them ready to kind of like when high school starts to happen in the fall, and gets a foot up on their accomplishments and their confidence going forward as they go into high school.
I think that's one of the important things, too. We've shifted that. It used to be 12, where VLPs could be, they could be 12. But when the SYRP program took on the Explorers, made that where it's up to 14, we realized that maybe that was the, it was a good cutaway, so that those entering high school get those skills, while 7th and 8th graders can. So we have had the circumstances where there's been some exceptional 7th and 8th graders that we've actually allowed to join the VLP, because they've shown that, that promise and that, that commitment. They've committed to the program, what they do. But it does give them the head start and it gives them an opportunity to, especially the 8th graders that are going to 9th grade, to interact with other high schoolers. Because it's always that daunting, like, I don't know anybody, I'm not going to know anybody, and I don't know what to expect. High schools is like, you know, when you're 8th grade, you have an idea of what it is, and then it's something completely different. It gives you the opportunity to network and learn other people, so at least like you're going in, you're kind of a little bit more comfortable, so. Or at least that's what we hope, so.
Yeah, that's, it's a good plan for them, so. Thank you, Edgardo, for that, and all the, all the staff that you mentioned earlier that helped contribute to keeping the program going. So thank you again. Okay. Any other reports? So that takes care of the director's reports. Any commission reports that you'd like to bring to the table from between the last meeting and now? I think you had something.
No, for sure. Yeah, so I wanted to give an update on the 49ers Prep Flag Football Program. Since the last meeting, I attended the coaches' training at Levi's Stadium. So some of the updates that I received there is pretty much, you know, when are we going to get equipment, communicating with, with the folks in terms of setting up initial processes of camps or leagues. So with that, we're hoping to start within the third week of June and up until first week, second week of August. And what I do want to put forth is that in discussions with Denise and Joseph, they've allowed this program to whatever fields that we need, and as long as it's not blocking off any time with any other programs that's being run, we'll be able, be able to book those particular fields for this program. As well as, there's going to be no staffing as well, so what I'm going to be doing is putting together a volunteer program in terms of coaches and referees, so we could carry out this program. We're hoping to have it located at Westlake Park, as well as near the, near the Bay Shore Community Center at the Midway Community over there at their park.
David.
What was it again?
David Rowe.
David Rowefield. Yes. So with that being said, like I said, June 3rd, we hope to start it off. I'm in talks with the 49ers in terms of having a kickoff at Westlake, so we could go ahead and bring in, hopefully we get players booked for that day, as well as the mascot and the 49ers to bring some equipment to help make it, you know, their special touch in terms of the camp. And then after that, we'll be carrying out leagues and games at the David Rowe Park near Bay Shore Community Center. But other than that, but in the next couple weeks, we'll be working with the volunteer group that, that I have, I already have five folks committed to coaching, and then we hope to double or even triple that in the next couple weeks as I'm reaching out to folks. But until the next meeting, we should have flyers ready, as well as the banners and the online registration website ready to go. So with that, I'll keep updating you guys with any more information. And yeah, so like I said, we're, I'm putting together a volunteer group, so if you guys have any coaches that you had in mind, feel free to reach out to me. But you'll be hearing from me either through email or flyers throughout the city in terms of recruiting folks, players, coaches, parents, volunteers, any of that sort.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Exciting times. All right. Any other announcements that we'd like to share from the community, from the days here? As you can see, community, there's a lot going on in Daly City, so I encourage you to look at the dailycity.org/iplay for the VLP program and, and stay on top of the, the summer program that David presented to us. And I know that some parents are out there that no other child who is just getting ready to graduate 8th grade and wondering, hey, town has a little bit of talent that he can share with the community, sign up. Sign up. Okay. We have some activities to announce here, so go ahead, Denise.
So before I get into the announcement about the upcoming event we have, I want to also remind the community that not only do we have the VLP program and the Summer Youth Recreation Program, we have quite a few camps available, both athletic and enrichment camps, and you can find those at www.dailycity.org/iplay. You can find it on our website. So there's, and we have a guide, a summer guide, that has all of our camps and programs in it. So fancy enough, we have one event upcoming that we can talk about, and that's the Active Adult Senior Resource and Fitness Fair. It's going to happen on Thursday, May 23rd. It's going to be at the Pacelli Event Center. It's from 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 noon. It's a free event for the active adults and seniors, and really anybody that wants to just come and learn more about what's going on with active adults and seniors. There'll be tabling, there'll be resource and community vendors, free health screenings and instructor-led fitness, exercise, and activities. So everyone is welcome, 9:30 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the Pacelli Event Center on May 23rd. And that is my only announcement for tonight.
Okay. With that said, that concludes our evening meeting for the Recreation Commission. Do we have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting?
My motion.
Do I have a second?
A second.
All right, this meeting is now ended. Thank you, everyone.